To be respectful of the time and no personal attacks. So in drawing straws at the beginning, the order goes like this. Councillor Hutchins, Ms McKinnon, and Ms Haslett-Thiel. That said, why don't we start with Councillor Hutchins and your three-minute opening remarks.
Good evening. I'm Nick Hutchins. And you're councillor? Thank you for all the five resident associations for putting this on. I know it's a job to do and I do respect you for it. I provide leadership service, communication, and vision to the Ward Three community. With my willingness to speak out and lead the way. Four years as councillor, fifteen years on the community leader on the TCRA, almost five years as president. So I helped support the interests of residents in Ward Three in Oakville for a long, long time. Leadership with vision and out-of-the-box thinking. There are many Oakville challenges for which I use my leadership skills, my entrepreneur business traffic knowledge, the TCRA and council experience to solve. As your councillor, I'm very proud of Oakville's recent Money Sense magazine's award, recognizing Oakville as the best place to live in Canada. We moved from 30th to first place, AAA rating, and we have low debt. The number-one issue facing Oakville revitalizing the downtown, I've been very concerned about. The issues: too high rents, online shopping, lack of parking, stores close too early, limited applications for our younger generations, all equal lack of foot traffic. High rents can be paid as long as there's enough people around. The first steps to fixing this is follow the town and the BIA's long-developed plans to overcome lake shore road construction issues for the retail stores. The midterm: to increase the downtown office space and encourage a boutique hotel to be built. The long term is to move the town hall downtown, twinning it with a two-stage theatre complex as an economic engines for the downtown. Communication here to everyone will be critical. Increased waterfront access like Edgemere and Tangerine Park restoration, the new open-air amphitheater to be built on Busby Park are fine examples. However, we must do more. An urgent care facility. I've been concerned about this ever since the town lost its hospital down here. I have been pressing for the urgent care facility to address the urgent medical facilities around here. Achievements finally which I'm most proud are helping stop the power plant that had continued dispollution would have affected all our property values. The collaborative effort on the new Ward Three recreation center, a new park to be built there. Council's designating Glen Abbey as a cultural heritage landscape. The town's acquisition of Deerfield, the land that goes with it. And Money Sense magazine endorsing Oakville as the best place to live in Canada. This is an excellent third-party endorsement of the council of work. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Ms McKinnon for her opening comments.
Hello, Ward Three residents. Welcome. My name is Vivienne McKinnon. I've lived in Ward Three for 22 years now. I have my master's degree in urban planning from Queen's University, which gives me a strong foundation to understand issues facing Oakville today. I've listened and recorded all your concerns and wishes. Just to name a few. Household garbage being dumped into garbage cans in park areas. More speed bumps are needed to slow down traffic on certain roads such as Churwell. Overgrown tree limbs, hangover sidewalks need to be trimmed. Cannabis drugs, no to small pot stores in Oakville, for me. Ban smoking marijuana on all public property, sidewalks, baseball diners, parks. Better bike paths, pass the loop instead of coming to dead ends. Also, have some more senior community centers. They're all over in the west side. Maybe we could make a little one on the east side. Let's talk about downtown now. Downtown is dying. Yes, I've seen the new road streetscape plans. Residents want casual dining restaurants on the lake with a view. Even if we have to landfill it to make more shoreline. Everyone is going to Bronte, Port Credit, and Burlington. Mid-rise condos, four to six stories downtown with retail on the ground floor. Negotiate with Bentall, the big bad wolf that owns most of downtown. They get to build, we get reduced fare market rents to bring back retailers in exchange. Boutique hotel with a jazz bar. Bring back Sharpies Riverside dance bar. Get the Economic Development Committee to find partners. Charity college students and everyone else for eleven. It is correct, I have not sat on committees. I have instead focused my time on our youth and seniors. Help Ward Three schools with daily reading program. I've chaperoned school trips, track and field. Drove school teams to after-school sporting events, baseball, volleyball, all those teams. Helped air cadets and junior optimist club with a fair share of food bank, Kerr Street Mission. With my background in urban planning, I feel I'm the best fit for Oakville now. I want to make sure that everyone feels cared for in Oakville. That is why, at the very start, when I decided to run for council, I chose to donate my whole first-year salary to five local charities. Thank you and take care of everyone.
Thank you. Now I'd like to ask Ms Haslett-Thiel for her opening comments for up to three minutes.
Good evening. And thank you again to the five residents associations. I know of the hard work and we appreciate it. Well, I've been out knocking on doors and it might have been your door. And I really appreciated the great conversations we've been having and that you've shared with me what's important to you. And here's what I have heard. We need a downtown economic development strategy that addresses the cultural hub and waterfront access and waterfront use. And we need it sooner, not later. We need to implement traffic calming and protect our parks, trees, and trails. We need to find better transit solutions. We need to make progress on our active transportation network. We need to manage growth and ensure residential development is respectful of the character of our neighborhoods. We need to keep our neighborhoods and roads safe. And we need to address bylaw enforcement. That's a long list. It's a list that I'm up for if you'll support me. My husband Larry and I chose to live in Oakville 27 years ago and raise our three children. And I'm a human resources professional by training. That's a little bit of background. When deciding who to vote for, I hope you'll consider who has demonstrated they will listen and work with all stakeholders to find the best possible solutions. Who has a track record of success in getting the support of town council and town staff. For the past nine years, I have been the president of the Joshua Creek Residents' Association. This experience has given me great insight into municipal governance, community relations, and advocacy. I've lobbied the town on issues like downtown and parking and zoning and community services. As the early champion of the community center, I led our board in consulting with residents on the community services that were important to us and identifying the challenges we would face in getting approvals. I co-founded the Coalition of Eleven Residents' Associations on the principle of fair geographic distribution of community services. Through working together, we persuaded town council to support a recreation center for all of us. Enter rebuild Oakville Arena and provide a senior center. I worked diligently over the last five years with the residents associations to ensure our community center will have great services and more park and integrated green spaces than were originally planned, including parking. Ward Three has two votes at the council table. We need a town councillor who can gain the support of the other councillors on matters of importance to us. I offer you the experience of a seasoned community leader, a person who's built consensus with groups and developed those constructive relationships that enable us to get things done. It would be my privilege to represent you at town council. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. And now we will move into the questions from the residents. I'm going to ask Ms McKinnon to lead off. And the question will be, is, in your opinion, what is the most significant issue facing Ward Three?
As I said earlier, the downtown core. We have to bring people back to the downtown, even throughout the revitalization of the landscaping. Let's get to the negotiation tables right now so that we don't waste two years. We can start dealing, figuring out where condos could go to bring people back. So that'll be one of my biggest issues.
Well, without a doubt, the biggest challenge we face is downtown revitalization. So here are a few things and it's quite a long list. But we need to focus on attracting a mid-sized tech business and that needs to be either professional services or a tech business because they have employees and clients who will shock downtown and will make downtown vibrant. We need to encourage, as you've heard, a boutique hotel with condos above it. We already have an official plan that supports growth responsibly in downtown and we need to move it forward. We have to get an answer on where we're going with our cultural facilities. And I know you care about that and you want to participate in that consultation. But bottom line, we have to resolve the parking issue that is down there. We've talked about it for a long time. And if you're a business, you want to know there's a space for your employees to park and for your customers to park. And circling the block is not a solution. And we need a mid-sized business and they're going to ask those tough questions. Where are my customers and my employees going to park? We need to support the BIA. But I think one of the biggest strategies is to ensure that we do this development respectfully of the heritage of our community, but also that we support our economic development office with greater resources because they can help with businesses bring people back.
Thank you. Councillor Hutchins, same question.
Okay, the downtown has problems. One of the main issues is that when you build a loud building for condominiums down there, the people who buy them have already, they're so expensive that they've already had their children, they've got houses in Florida, they've got cottages in Muskogee, they're never around. So my plan is not to allow condominiums anymore, but to actually to have office space. On the fire station, you can actually, as of right now, build up to 12 stories because of the zoning. That would be a perfect area, in my opinion, to have office space. Office people shop all the time and they're all the way downtown. They provide foot traffic and they're there. That would be also an awesome place to have a boutique hotel. So that's one of the areas. The other thing we have to do is get access to the waterfront. I've been all over the world and it's ridiculous. We've got lovely parks but nowhere to drink or sit or watch the boats or anything. And we have one of the most beautiful facilities anywhere in Canada. We're not using our river, we're not using our lake. None of that is providing any pull for all the downtown. And we have to get access to them to do that. And that's my major. Thank you.
Ms Haslett-Thiel, I'd like to ask you to start the next question. There is concern among residents about vacant houses. What specific measures can council take to prevent the deterioration of vacant properties and homes?
So most of you probably know that our bylaw enforcement is currently budgeted as a complaint-driven process, not a proactive process, but a complaint-driven process. So the sooner you pick up the phone and call about that vacant property or that leased property that is not maintaining the property standards, the sooner they'll get started. In 2019, the budget does call for 24/7 bylaw enforcement. And I think that that will have a big impact on property standards and what the frustration is about some of the vacant homes. My father used to say, "Control what you can control" and we can't control who buys those homes. And what we certainly can, welcome them into our neighborhood, encourage them to be good neighbors by helping them understand the property standards. And then, if they choose not to follow a bylaw enforcement officer's order within 10 days, we should be penalizing them. Now currently what happens is the town contracts out that work and the cost of that is given to the resident on their tax bill. I propose that we consider putting on staff some individuals who can do that work. And then we can cover that cost, more than cover that cost, and get the work done more quickly. And we can also charge a more substantial fine for repeat offenders. Because I think it's the repetitive behavior that's a critical nature. And the last comment is, you know, we need to ensure and encourage leasing if somebody chooses to buy a property, not leaving it for a year for development.
Thank you. Councillor Hutchins, same question. The concern about residents with vacant homes. What specific measures can council take to prevent the deterioration of vacant properties and homes?
Well, this is a difficult question. I mean, people are allowed to buy homes and if they have more than one, they may need one vacant. But they certainly have to keep up the standards. And particularly, you can't allow the home to become rat-infested or have raccoons or coyotes living there. So it is very important that if you have a vacant home next to you and you see that the property's standards around it are not being up kept, that you call as soon as possible. I can get bylaw there almost the next day to look at it and then they will have a notice put on the house and they will get in contact with the owners or through the real estate agents who are handling it. And they will then make sure that the grass is cut and everything is looking better again. Unfortunately, it gets a little more difficult when you're talking about property. Holes in the roof and I've seen properties where they've just been, looked like they've been abandoned. I think the only time we can then go in is when it becomes a fire hazard. And I'm not sure that that's one of the ways we want to enforce that, but I would certainly push that as another standard we need to beef up to make sure that we can do something. Thank you.
Ms McKinnon.
Okay, this question going third is going to make it very boring as you've already heard everything before. With respect to houses that are vacant, I believe that neighbors living next door are the best police. As soon as they realize that the grass is growing two feet high or less, they call the bylaw office. And then, of course, as everyone said, the bylaw officer comes out, they put a notice on the door, and the grass is cut. We have to maybe think about if we could streamline it and why it takes so many days for the individual to be able to cut the grass if we know the individual's not there. Because the poor neighborhood, 10 days here, 10 days there, it just becomes a vicious cycle. I've heard from my canvassing that there's one neighborhood in particular where one house has, they think people using it as a little garbage dumping spot and cars are parked, throwing your business out of it. To me, we have to enforce. Going back downtown, maybe have less parking enforcement officers, become bylaw enforcement officers, do dual role so that we can get more officers out looking at everything. So everything's been said before and we just have to make sure that the neighborhoods are kept nice and neat because Oakville does have the most beautiful neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto our next question and Councillor Hutchins will lead this one off. Tell us how your past experiences will be of benefit to Ward Three.
Yes, thank you for that. I've been on council for four years. I've been on the Residents' Association charter for 15 years and is present for five. But that's not just, that's just my public, I guess, face. I'm also an entrepreneur and business owner. And I actually own patents on designing and manufacturing LED lights for inpatient applications for roads and airfields and helicopter ads and what have you. I'm talking all the time to departments of transportation worldwide to improve safety. And I think one of the things I can be of benefit is to have my experience on how to make roads safer, how to make roads less congested. I'm a great proponent of roundabouts instead of traffic signals. There are 32 ways you can have an accident vehicle-to-vehicle and 24 vehicles to people on a four-section intersection. There are eight ways with vehicle-to-vehicle and eight ways vehicle-to-pedestrian on a roundabout. And because you're actually in a roundabout, you're usually striking a vehicle at a bleak angle. The accidents are not as severe and the whole thing is much safer. So I would use my traffic space. Thank you.
Okay, Ms McKinnon. Please tell us how your past experiences will be of benefit to Ward Three.
Okay, 35 years ago, I sold my master's thesis. It's never been done before. I sold to Cabernet Fairview, Campville, and Orlando. I did it on market development in Kingston, Ontario. I come with the ability to be able to sit down at any negotiation table, speak across, to find out a win-win situation. To me, I would cherish the opportunity to be able to sit down with two different people, Bentall people and also club links. I truly believe with club links, we could cut with the lawyers. Let's just sit down with them now, not make the lawyers rich, and say, "Let's make Glen Abbey picture a donut with a circle in the middle." Let them develop in the center of the donut. Keep greenery around the whole outside so all the people that bought their beautiful homes to look at the golf course will still see the greenery. To me, there is always a solution. And if you have a win-win situation with both parties, it's a better deal. So that's what I'm hoping.
Ms Haslett-Thiel.
Well, I said a lot about my past experience in my opening statement. I think pulling 14 residents, sorry, 11 residents associations together and getting them to consensus demonstrates that it's an experience that you need at town council. I want to reference Canada Post as a past experience. None of us were very happy about Canada Post mailboxes. But it was little old me that picked up the phone and called their government relations person and said, "We need to talk." And we managed to get him to come out and meet with the residents association. And if we solved all of our problems, we weren't going to stop the implementation. But we did and were able to move some of those mailboxes to better locations. So again, my past experience is about working with people, reaching out and saying that we need to find a solution here. And it's finding the best solution. So I'm not your candidate to make promises that say, "Wow, I can wave a magic wand." But what my experience as a residents' association leader has been is, you've got to hear all of your perspectives. There's a nugget there that we can work towards to make things better. There is a solution. And as a human resources professional, well, I've done conflict resolution. I've been an ombuds person. I understand the importance of being independent and neutral. All of those experiences will benefit you if you choose to elect me as your town councillor.
Thank you. Ms Haslett-Thiel, let you catch your breath while I find a new question because you were... What is your position on the retail sales of cannabis in Ward Three?
Lucky me to go first. Okay, well, it's very evident the province has given the towns an option to opt out of the immediate sale of cannabis. And so I'm going to support opting out. There is limited... There is limited and changing information from the province about who will be approved to sell. What is the inspection process for public safety and for age enforcement? And I do believe, consistent with the town's practices, that we need to hold a public consultation. Because I'm not naive, there are strong voices on both sides of this equation. And I support more thoughtful planning. So we have the option to take time and get it right for Oakville and that's what I'm going to support.
Councillor Hutchins.
Okay, I've already met and people have noticed my position. I'm going to opt out at the present time. I do worry though that if we do opt out and we can always opt in before April, as I understand it, back if we wish. We have a one-time choice to opt out after December to January and then we can go back in if we wish. We have a problem with cannabis now. The police is dealing with it every day in all our high schools and schools. The problem is, the reason for having cannabis as a saleable drug, like alcohol, is we're trying to get rid of the drug pushes. We're trying to get rid of the drugs being mixed, fentanyl. I mean, at council, for instance, I asked for a report on putting nox on to first responders because I was really worried about the fentanyl coming in from the west. That report, the council has agreed and put it on and is putting it on the first responders. We've got to get the drugs out of the drug tractors. Initially, I want to hold still and not join the rush to have sales in the town. But I will take a look at it later on to see what impact it has. Thank you.
Ms McKinnon.
You heard before, I am 100% totally against small mom-pop shops selling drugs. Opting out is my stance. If down the road, there's pressure, 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 the only way it would ever be sold in Oakville would be through the LCBO so they can monitor the age. But again, that's only if all the residents push for it. I'm still under the belief of no cannabis being sold here. I do agree with Nick though that, I've never done drugs, but with, I'm sure he hasn't either, but I'm just saying, with respect to drugs, you don't want to have, I guess, diluted drugs. So I'm glad, you know, I wish Truville did not bring this for September or October 17. All I can say is people stay off the road is probably October 17 because I think there's going to be a real big problem with a lot of the students coming out of school. So that's my answer.
Okay, thank you. We have time for one last question before we go into the closing remarks. I am going to say that Councillor Hutchins is up first. Crime in our community. Do you have any new ideas to make our community as safe as possible?
Okay, so I'll go.
My turn.
Okay. Okay, the question was, what are my plans to make the community safe? Is that the question, sir?
Yes, sir.
My plans to keep the community safe. Oakville, all in all, is a very safe bubble, as my children like to say. There had been a rash of break-ins, okay? We had threw garages or cars left undone. I think the break-ins are coming because maybe young kids want to get their money now so they can buy their drugs October 17. To me, the police force in Oakville have always been respectful and polite. I like the way they try and make the speeders reduce their speeds. I've spoken to a couple policemen when they're sitting at corners to see when people run through traffic lights and stop signs. There is a problem with stop signs. I wouldn't mind like rerouting roundabouts in certain areas. It is a good idea to avoid the stop signs, roundabouts, safety, as Nick also said. So with respect to this policing... So with respect to this policing, Oakville, we are very lucky to live in Oakville and even luckier to live in Ward Three.
Thank you. Ms. Hasslett-Thiel, do you have any new ideas to make our community as safe as possible?
So I first want to say, I think that we need to pause, because when there's an incident, I mean, fear starts to spread across the neighborhoods. And for the person who it happens to, it is horrific. Somebody breaking into your house is not at all what we stand for in Oakville. I like Neighborhood Watch. But the challenge with Neighborhood Watch is not as many of us are at home during the day. And so that organization has struggled to stay alive. But I think there's something there that we could pursue. I do believe that one of our best defenses is to know our neighbors and to be alert and to have a communication with people that says, "Listen, I'm going to be on vacation, or I am going to be away. Can you keep an eye for me?" And I know lots of us do that already. The other piece is, our police force is responsible and responsive, but sometimes you don't see them very often. And there's no harm in them taking a drive, which just keeps us all feeling like, yep, somebody's keeping an eye. We've had a lot of construction and lots going on in the neighborhoods where there was the most recent issue. And so there's some strangers in the neighborhood. We have to keep our heads up about it. But a brilliant idea, I don't have a brilliant idea on this one, but I'd welcome hearing from you suggestions you have about how we can make you feel safer, because we are the safest place in Canada. We have a pretty amazing town.
The moderator is going to talk, because you've got the organization wrong. Anyways. Okay, speeding, drugs, criminals. Look, MoneySense Magazine said that we're in the number-one place to live in Canada. One of the things they looked at is violent crime and regular crime. And Halton Region has an excellent police force. They literally, we are the safest community around anywhere. Speeding, this is a problem that everybody has all across the GTA. When police start ticketing roads to stop speeders, they usually find it's the locals who are doing it. It's not your average person who decides to take a shortcut and speed through the neighborhoods. That doesn't happen. It's the local people that are doing it. So you need to talk to your neighbors. You need to tell them to slow down. The drugs, we've already discussed. That's one of the areas that I'm going to be taking a look at later on. I'm opting out now, but I am concerned that we are allowing the drug pushers to still remain around if we make the cannabis so hard to access and cost so much. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for the Q and A portion. I may have messed up the order, but we are down to the closing comments for up to three minutes. And I'm going to ask Ms. Hasslett-Thiel to lead us off.
First, let me say thank you for being patient through all this heat. I see some, we're losing some, and I don't blame you. It is pretty hot. So Ward Three has some big decisions to make over the next four years. We are the keepers of downtown. We have a sense of responsibility more than anywhere else in the town to make sure that we help the businesses come through construction. And we have a sound plan. So when we come out of construction, we have businesses launching on the side streets, and we're welcoming people. Doing that takes bringing people together and having businesses at the table, not just residents, but all of us together working on it. And I believe I've proven that I can work with a group of people and look for the best possible solution. We need an advocate at the table when issues are talked about, not just about Ward Three, but about the whole of Oakville, that will listen, not to just your concerns, because while they are critical, it's also your ideas that are critical. It's not my perspective that should be at the table. It's your perspective, that I am tasked, if you elect me, to represent. And we need to have candid conversations about that so that you understand the challenge we would face in getting the votes. My commitment to you, if you choose to elect me, is that not only will I listen and work with you, I will be your champion. As I was a champion of a community center, they said it couldn't be done. But we've done it, and we've done it with class, and we've done it respecting the character of the neighborhood, and we've done it together. And that's what I would bring if you elect me.
Thank you. Now, Counselor Hutchins, your closing comments.
Yes, thank you. It's a privilege to be a councillor, and I really thank you for allowing me to for the last term. And I'm hoping that you will be looking at my results. I'm controlling taxes, as we're keeping the Oakville tax portion below the level of inflation. That I can promise. Revitalizing the downtown, I have a special interest in that. You've heard me make proposals from moving the town square down there. I'd like to actually go further to say that I'd like to put it on the Centennial Square when the pool gets closed. And that's why I'd like to join it with two theaters, Sea Complex, so that there'd be an economic engine for the downtown forever. We need foot people down there. We need people shopping. We need to get access to the waterfront. This is one of the prime areas that we need to focus on. Expanding the active transportation and Parkland and Tree County. I'm a tree hugger from way back. Parkland is one of the reasons I ran at the last council and the previous time when I didn't make it. It was one of my key platforms. Expanding the active transportation, well, this is one of the good ways actually of reducing traffic. If you can make the bicycle lanes and make active transportation one of your key features in your neighborhoods, you don't need to have a car, particularly if you can make the active transportation around the go-station safe. At the present time, it's ridiculous. We don't, I mean, I wouldn't want to ride a bicycle on a traffic road to get to the go-trad station in two days. So that's one of our key priorities we need to focus on. Look, I, you know what I've done. Those of you who have my WhatsApp newsletter know that I send you information on Oakville, what it's doing, but I also have a much wider interest. I send you what's happening, what I think would be interesting and what I think will be impacting you. So I get a lot of compliments on that. If I'm not around, you won't get it, so. If you like my WhatsApp, think about it. Lastly, I just want to thank you again. I keep coming back to this MoneySense magazine endorsing Oakville. This is a tremendous third-party endorsement. I mean, we don't have any control of this, and they've come out and chosen Oakville's number one. We were 30th before. We're now number one. That's a tremendous achievement for council. So I would ask for your vote for the next election, please. Thank you.
Ms. McKinnon, your closing comments.
No matter what, I want to thank everyone for opening their doors to me. It's been a win-win situation for me, no matter if I win or lose. So thank you for that. Things that I weren't able to speak about was the Honk Parking App, the one-hour free app. I hope that if I'm not elected, if I am elected, I would cancel that app, because it's the app maker that's making a lot of money. I would have free parking 24/7 downtown, like they do in the States. The people that work in the shops are told not to park on the street. They have to park elsewhere. They have given a warning if they park in the street. They have to leave that open to retailers. Also, the charities, you may or may not know. I still will try and do something for them. Per Street Mission, Fair Share Food Bank, Just Be You Mental Health, Ian Anderson House, and A Clean House for Seniors. Those will be, I'm hoping, the charities that will receive my first-year salary. And also, what I've been told from residents on weekends, I beg the bylaw enforcement officers to allow residents to be able to park on the road on Friday night and Saturday nights only. Because if someone's having a party, nothing's worse than having a $30 parking ticket on your car because you were doing the right thing, not driving your car home. So that's something that I hope we all look at in council. And that is all I have to say. So thank you all for coming out on this holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have a big round of applause for a candidate to take the... So I know it's hot, and I know it's been a while, but I'd like to ask the mayoral candidates to come up. We'll have a quick Q and A session from the floor, and then we'll...